Okay. Yeah, I think I might just take the. I keep going back.
You sometimes use your tablet.
Right. It's just an. Other things. Investing dollars for 12. No, no.
Yeah.
Doesn't make it accessible.
I was like, you want some?
And your question about that.
Excellent.
Get forward on Friday. That's very valid. The only thing I've. It's always have. And they can make money there. You just.
We're doing it even. Live, right?
Oh, yeah. Something else out. Couple of them.
He passed away. I think Paige hasn't been up yet. Oh, mission tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow.
Yes. The increase.
Are you, Bob? I'm doing, you know what? I'm doing a better and better. Hey, John.
How are you over there? Kids in the broking tournament this weekend or are they going somewhere else?
No, so we. Some ways we. He's playing for Brandon, right? So. We're having a machine. I thought. Let's pledge allegiance on. So, yeah, I mean. Then you probably. So which is definitely a just. He knows of strength by her goalie. They're red. Yes, there is. Kind of stuff in the room. Yeah, they pulled out the W. Do you know what direction you face?
Long shot.
Yeah, so we were in Wisconsin last week and. Siren.
All I know is sort of.
I for two.
On the state discipline. The ice. Resident of Sioux Falls. I'm still. Level and. Listen all.
That's not great. Are you on that with Jeff, with Jeff Shale?
Yeah.
Baptist. Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
My brother in law.
Well, I'm on stand.
Man.
He only get.
Yeah, little baby.
We all get to face you. Great. Now, aren't you going? Yes. I wish I were asked. Okay. First, Joe.
Well, we have representatives from every. I've been in Sioux Falls since I.
I would hate. I would hate.
Disappointing.
That's why I would. This is. No, state attorney.
State's attorney.
It's supposed to be making.
Luck yet or not.
Are we ready?
He wasn't leaving until later.
Are we ready? I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance. There's not one in the room, but it's on the agenda, so. So we face Cindy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the. Which stands. By nature, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And this is a special meeting on the fairgrounds. I would like to start with introductions because I'm sorry, I'm not really good at everybody. So we're just going to start here in the corner with the commission. We're going to go around our table. And then we're going to do that rows over there, if you wouldn't mind. So.
Many High County Commissioner. Carol Bennigan. Commissioner.
Kim Christiansen, Commission Reporter. Heidi Berger, Commissioner. Jean Bender, Commissioner.
Ian Karski, Commissioner. Jeff Hackoff, City of Sioux Falls. Eric Neber, Cudler Law Firm. Then Kate, the county auditor. County Commission Office.
This is my auditor's office.
Markins, Director of Facilities, Minneapolis County.
Earl Muller, Commission Administrative Officer. Sylvia Walters from Pipestone Holdings.
Mike James, retired.
Dylan Carroll from Stammens Financial Group.
Timmy, I'm retired.
Amy Pocola, I'm representing the community.
Heidi's winner, I'll go with I'm representing the community as well.
Charlie Smith, Smith Architecture Planet. Joel Feldman, Convention, Sports and Leisure International.
I'll get two people on Zoom.
Good morning, my name is Chad Bigler. I will say I'm representing the community as well.
We have another person on Zoom. Back row.
Really hammer to Empire Fair.
Scott Wickson, Empire Fair. Stu Horst with Nyberg. Or my Nyberg.
Hey. This is all media.
We have media people here, so.
And Adam's online.
And Adam is online. Hello, Adam, we're glad you're here. Okay, we're going to move on to this is a special meeting. Item number one is. Lions Fairground Task Force Marketing and Economic Analysis Report by Charles. Take over.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming together. I know it's been a little quiet. On the project here for a while, but we've been digging into the numbers, going through analysis, competitive analysis, all the economics and. Cost estimating and things of that nature. We're here today to. Present our findings. Joel Feldman, CSL will do that.
Really, thank you, Commissioners. Happy to be here. It has been. Three and a half months that we've been working on this study process and. Been a lot of hard work and a lot of. Help that we've gotten from the community. So I certainly appreciate the assistance from the Commissioners, from the task force, the fairgrounds and everybody else that's been a part of this process. So with that, further ado, I'll jump into the. Permission, I'll jump into the presentation. CSL International is a third party consulting program based out of Minneapolis. We do work all across the country. Communities that are looking into potential investments in. In this case, we were looking at the WH Lion Fairgrounds. Plan effort. In conjunction with. This architecture, we conducted a market feasibility analysis of the potential opportunities for an investment into the WH Lion Fairgrounds. The process included. Build analysis of the local operating fairgrounds. A very deep dive into the local market to understand. Community assets exist and what opportunities exist with further investment in the fairgrounds. Benchmarking against comparable facilities and destinations throughout the country. An analysis of the industry trends from the fairgrounds and multipurpose event facility. Well, as detailed market research into the potential user groups that would be attracted to an event facility and improved event facility here in Sioux Falls and Minneapolis County. Based off of that research and interviews with. Benchmarking with over 40 competitive facilities. Region in the country and with over 40 interviews of current past users and potential. Developed. Projections of the financial implications and the economic implications of investing into the fairgrounds complex. The reason that we've been asked with this is. The words of. Because our complex involves community. They. Asset hosting the Sioux Empire Fair attracting. And he's a year, which is, as I understand, larger than the state fair in Huron. That is. From the last few years. It's a well positioned asset right off of Interstate 29. Close proximity to downtown. Downtown Sioux Falls and some of the assets there with hotels, restaurants, entertainment and other amenities. And it's also an important asset from a community perspective, hosting a variety of different local events, whether it's Renaissance Festival, the Kennel Club, Food Shelf, as well as the economic impact that it's generating through attracting outside of Minneapolis County and Sioux Falls that otherwise, without the presence of the multipurpose event facilities, events when you're the economic benefits. Brief overview of. Fairgrounds itself. Major site with 150,000 square foot exhibition hall. Seating capacity for right around 1,800 typical. 3,000 for the max capacity for some of the largest events that are brought in there. Full yet inside of the expo hall is very. It's space that hosts a lot of different types of events, whether they are dirt floor related, flat concrete floor, trade shows, consumer shows, events that are. Helping the economy, the community, also those that are helping the quality of life of the greater Sioux Falls and Minneapolis County marketplace. Some of those events that are enhancing that quality of life. Market, temple church. Who's doorway. Drum line. Some of these events are held at the fairgrounds because realistically, they aren't able to be held anywhere else. One of the benefits of the location of the fairgrounds is the proximity and the central location within the community to provide really great access for. Community participants and the members. Were to be relocated somewhere else, that would be a significant challenge that we would face in terms of being able to provide that quality asset to these groups that so desperately need this, this space in the community. But importantly. Importantly, there is an. You have on the community as well, like the. The Kennel Club and hosting. Over 2,000 attendees for their annual event and the revenues and the impact that they're generating. The impact that the food giveaway has on the community and the maintaining the quality of life here in Minneapolis County are important assets to. Fairgrounds offers. In terms of the overall operations of the fairgrounds, this is where some of the details and the numbers. And I don't want to belabor this point too much, but we are doing a significant amount of events on an annual basis, generating over half a million attendees to the fairgrounds. Expo Center itself is operating at a pretty strong occupancy rate. Typically, what we look for with multipurpose event facilities is somewhere in a 50 to 70% range for occupancy. Reason for that is that there are natural dark days that occur from holidays that. Of interest from the events that are coming in, needing to clean up and change over and do all of the maintenance and repairs. These venues typically don't operate at 100% occupancy, rather that 50 to 70% range is where we'd like to see them. Despite the. Existing conditions of the expo hall today, you're still operating at somewhere between a 35 to 47% occupancy, which is a very strong occupancy rate for the complex and obviously is showing the importance of this asset. Not rational standpoint, we took a look at the financial operations over the past six years at the fairgrounds complex. The most part it is. Self sustaining. In the market, many of these. Facilities do require subsidy. Fact that we are operating in the black is a strong positive for the WH Lion Fairgrounds. Big reason for that is the Sioux Empire Fair and the revenue that that's generated. Last year, I believe it was close to half a million dollars in that cost. There was able to bring in. Without that, the, the complex would be operating at a likely six figure deficit on an annual basis to be able to provide services and the economic impact.
Question is, what can you say without public subsidy? We open hundreds of thousands of dollars per year.
In terms of the, the facility maintenance and repairs.
And just 150,000 to the contract to the Fair Board to run the fairgrounds.
Yes, sir. And. Thank you for the correction. It was. It so the $150,000 would be required to maintain that subsidy and maintain that profitability at the complex. Thank you very much for that.
So there is a public subsidy.
Yes. Return that.
Reflected in your numbers. 150,000.
Yes, it is. That this is, this is the full operations. The, the only thing that has been taken out of the is, is non operating revenues and expenses, things like interest expense, depreciation, things of that nature. This is intended to showcase the financial operations of the. Scott.
The $150,000 we get a year is a management where we lease the property from the county and that is a management fee that we manage the property with. I would say that the other hundreds of thousands, which is probably 150 to 200,000 dollars a year, which we're very grateful for, our, our maintenance and up to. The county's assets that you would have no matter who is running facility. And they are the county's buildings and their facility.
So that, that management fee is reflected in operating revenues. Where exactly? Is that contract services or where is that?
And. Commissioner Bender, I'd like to. Take a moment to. I, I believe that those, that 150,000 was taken out. I'd like to, I would love to double, double check and get back to you on that. I believe that $150,000 was taken out. It was as Scott described it as a management fee. I don't think it is in these numbers, but I can double check and get back to you on that specifically.
So if we put that 150 back in, there'd be another 150,000 profitability?
Yes, sir. If that's if that is taken.
You mentioned interest expense. Is there debt?
Pardon me?
Is it? You said interest expenses, there debt on this facility?
Interest expenses on bank accounts, minimal dollars on something like that. It's, there's no debt on. I understand it.
Scott, can you clarify that?
Yeah.
This is really is minimal.
Our, the Sioux Empire Fair Association is debt free. We have a lease for a floor scrubber. The fact that otherwise we have no.
The opera, under the operating expenses, the insurance line, that's the Fair Board's insurance expense. It's not the insurance that the county pays for, for property insurance of the buildings.
Liability.
So it is our county.
No.
It's not, it's what the Fair Board pays. So that would be one of the other items is the insurance that we pay for all the properties. Probably not factored into here, comes under the cost of the county providing. That to the fairgrounds.
You're going to have insurance wherever this building is.
Yes, no, but it. Insurance, I mean, when you look at expenses, you got to figure all expenses. Doesn't matter if it's subsidy, it's our insurance, it's the deductibles that we pay for the part of the roof going off of the building. Rebuilding the parking lot, the hundreds of thousands that we had over the years. I mean, there's a lot of ongoing expenses that the county picks up. So just wondering. The reality of these operating expenses don't factor in with the county puts in. It's just what the Fair Board is paying for expenses.
From a capital repair and replacement standpoint, fixing buildings, fixing the parking lots, things of that nature are not included. Just the annual operating. Operations of the complex and what revenues and expenses are, are generated and expended on it. The point to this really is to highlight the fact that from an operational standard, there is minimal, if any, investment required in order to maintain the operations of the facility from an, on an annual basis. $150,000 from a management fee, the, the, the capital repair and replacement is holding that separate just to operate the complex. It is very close to in the black on an annual basis, based off the operations of the fair and based off of the economic impact that is being generated. And that's part of the reason for the investment that would, I would. From the community standpoint is the return on investment that, that the community gets in terms of the new spending, which is something that we're going to get into here.
Okay, question, I guess, I'm not understanding. What is this financial statement for the Fair Association? Or their operation of fairgrounds? What is this? So that according to that $150,000 management fee, I'm sure there are salaries paid. And those things, are those included in here or how does that work out?
Sellers, wages and benefits are all included in this. This is for the operations of the fairgrounds.
So they. So the 150,000 is not included in here.
I don't.
But all the expenses incurred with the 150,000 are included.
I don't believe, and, and again, I would like to double check to make sure that the hundred thousand dollars has been. But the expenses in terms of the salaries, wages and benefits that are paid are included.
Including the first association.
Of the $150,000 is included. I would want to double check that. Is that?
So it, it seems that it's a financial statement that's pulled together with some things pulled out and other things not, and not inserted. And it just, it doesn't seem like it's giving a picture of the, of the whole item as to what is there. That's all, because I guess. There's another 150,000. If that 150,000 isn't included in the revenue, then there's another 150,000 of profitability that can help with ongoing maintenance and everything else in all those things. So I think it's, it would be nice to get the whole picture as to where that's at.
And I can clarify that.
And maybe you can add just a footnote or something that the. Facilities are provided no cost. Doesn't really prevent, I mean, it doesn't provide a true picture of. The overall operation. I think it's more to Mr. Timian's point, it provides with the $150,000 in, it would provide an overview of what the Fair Board is.
Those parents that still have an adult in the basement, it doesn't charge rent. It is a non-revenue asset.
No, you're not speaking.
That for.
For that clarification.
Any other questions on this slide before we? So I alluded to, there is a benefit that is afforded to the county. Passing into the. The bush line fairground. In terms of the annual events, that is that are generating attendance, the half a million people on an annual basis that are brought into Minneapolis County. And rate roughly $21 million in direct annual spending that is new to the market, whether there are people coming in from outside of Minneapolis County and spending nights in hotel rooms. Whether they are sliding into the area and spending money at restaurants, on entertainment, transportation or other retail or other elements within the county. Anything from the community pool that already are in Minneapolis County is not included. Numbers. You have removed any of the spending from the community representatives with the understanding that it's likely that they would have spent those dollars in the community even without the fairgrounds complex. So these numbers are intended to be net new dollars. More bases that are being spent in the community. Yes, sir.
Will you track non-residents at events? Is that how you determine that or?
Yeah, we estimated the percentage of people that were local, that were day trippers, that were just coming in and driving back home at night and those that were non-local and spending the night in.
You know that ratio that you used as far as what percentage of attendance was non?
It was different based off of the different types of events, whether it was the fair, trade shows, the equestrian or livestock shows. Dog show, things of that nature. Both of them had a different. Geodehr and on historical activity.
Well, just biggest one being the fair, of course, with that.
The fair, I believe, was. Want to say 45% of people.
You.
So are those percentages based on some national numbers that you have or is that based on something that was really more specific to? Minneapolis County?
Stuff of. The conversations with Scott and his. His team and some of the data that they've collected over the years in terms of taking a look at people, the, the license plates on cars as they're walking through the parking lot on estimations on. Percentage of participants from conversations with event rights holders, the people that are renting out the fairgrounds and conversations from their standpoint in. The percentage of people that are non-local versus. Before I move on, I do want to note that. Fiscal impact was also measured in terms of the new sales tax revenue that is generated. State is a little bit of a challenge to try and highlight. I mean, it's at one point. State tax revenue from the. Activity that's going on. Throughout the Minneapolis community with these new visitors. That could be a little bit. Challenging just because of the nature of where people are coming in, whether they're outside of the state or inside of the state. The sales tax revenue roughly half of. Like 400, 500,000 dollars on an annual basis. Is projected to be new on an annual basis from activity that is coming in from outside of the area. In addition to that, roughly $300,000 a year in terms of both the tourism and business improvement district tax that is generated for. For various best. That. This is what is occurring even without. With the investment that's being made by the county today in terms of operating the fairgrounds complex. This is what, what is currently. So understanding where we sit currently, we started taking a look very closely at. Variety of different elements and skim through these. So if there are any questions, please feel free to stop me. We started with a. Analysis of the location of Sioux Falls Market. And fairgrounds complex within the greater visual marketplace. Many of the attendees for events on a weekly basis, Monday through Thursday, are going to be coming in from about. Drive radius. Those are the ones that are going to be most actively utilizing the space. Those that are coming in from about 30 minutes are. Attendees that are a little bit more frequent. In some of the public humor shows, some of the equestrian livestock shows. You'd anticipate a wider number of attendees for weekend events, for larger annual events, for things like the state fair. I mean, there. 90 minutes, hour and a half drive, some of the events like. Or cross or, or some of the other events that are held at the complex that are weekend events. 90 minutes to a three hour drive, three hour drive are going to be the ones that are primarily going to be people that are spending the night. Anticipate more economic impact generated. Drive rings are important, especially as we're compared. Markets and understanding the positioning of Sioux Falls and Minneapolis County within the greater. Sustainable operations of. If you dive into the. Graphic and social economic. Part of the markets. Noted as a strong positive for. Any complex as an opportunity to host and attract into the. We took. Some additional analysis in terms of the average household number of businesses where the spending comparison to sales is generated from throughout the. And then took a look from an infrastructure standpoint at the. Importantly, as we're looking at this as an asset to generate economic benefit. It's important to understand the hotel inventory to be able to accommodate those events and types of activities that would be coming in and spending the night for multiple days. And roughly. Have a little over 1,800 hotel rooms consisting only of properties that have more than 100. You have greater Sioux Falls marketplace to close by 1,000 hotel suites. I can accommodate the best. Significant advantage over some of the. Throughout the state, throughout the region, but don't have that visitor industry infrastructure that Sioux Falls and Minneapolis County. Conversations with event rights holders, the. Like about Sioux Falls are not only the hotel inventory, the proximity to restaurants, retail and team adoptions, which are assets that. To drive that non-local usage from groups and that interest from groups outside of the. In terms of the hotel operation. And the community perspective, we have opportunities to add more than a benefit into the community. My way of adding more hotel room nights. Look at the annual occupancy and seasonality of occupancy within hotel properties, taking a look at the average daily rate, which is the nightly rate that people spend at the properties. I suggest that there are opportunities for adding additional room nights, conversations with the. CBB, I have. Opportunities to add additional room nights into the market by bringing in. Australian livestock. You're shown trade shows, other events from outside of the. Another important analysis that we conducted is inventorying the existing event facilities. When you keep all. And understanding from that standpoint, dynamically, what is going on at other venues to make sure that anything that we are projecting to, to develop at the WH Lion Fairgrounds will be additive to the market as a whole. Events at the convention center, I mean, at the center at Sanford Pentagon are important community. Economic impact generating and activities. We don't want to create competition by developing space at the fairgrounds to compete against those. So importantly, any new events that were, were. So importantly, any new events that we're projecting are to be additive to what is going on elsewhere in the community. Additionally, importantly, one of the things that noted during the process is the strength of investment in the public assembly facilities. Sioux Falls has a very strong representation as a strong event facility market, investment that's been paid in the premier center and the convention center. Investment that's been made in Pentagon and Levitt Pavilion. These are assets that highlight the community pride and are highlighting the opportunity that that Sioux Falls and many Ha Ha County have in terms of being able to attract and are open for business. Non-local events. One of the things with the fairgrounds that is challenging is as you drive into it, you don't have that same presence at the fairgrounds complex as you do with some of these other facilities. A lack of a grand entrance as you're driving up to it, you don't, you don't really have a sense of arrival as you do with these complexes and fairgrounds complex really seems from an industry standard standpoint somewhat out of place relative to these other event facilities that exist today in Sioux Falls, many Ha Ha County.
Just for you. Do you account for some of the new properties coming online, the sixty square foot at the Steel District of the platform or convention trade?
And then we've got a more detailed analysis to highlight a handful of the primary complexes that that's our analysis of local markets. Beyond just the local market, we took a look at the competitive landscape statewide and regional marketplace. First, from a multi-purpose fairgrounds event center complex. Facilities that have dirt floor capabilities to host equestrian livestock and agricultural black floor facilities that can host public consumer shows, trade shows, concerts, a variety of different events throughout the state and regional marketplace. The WH line fairgrounds represents relatively well in, on paper in terms of the amount of size and space that it currently offers. One of the challenges is that as you look at the fairgrounds that has been currently reinvested in that's for events. Invested in and Bonner Park down at Grand Island that is ran from the state of Nebraska and has a nine figures with nine figure budget for a master plan that is currently underway along with development of a casino and hotel property. Seeing significant reinvestment in some of these event complexes elsewhere throughout the regional market. But that position that despite that Sioux Falls is well positioned in terms of our location, in terms of the event space, the size, the complex and the opportunities that exist to be able to attract events into the marketplace.
Just kind of keep things consistent, if I may. So I'm looking at the, where did you get the fifty-two thousand square feet for the fairgrounds of continuous exhibit space?
That is within center, center hall, and part of that is excluded with South Hall because of columns and the separation of the spaces that are included.
That's the center of the expo building.
Part of the center. Seventy-five thousand square feet total with columns and some of the other challenges with hosting events in it, the overall continuous spaces were.
The total indoor event space, what buildings are all included in that hundred and seventy-six? The armory?
And there's included in there as well, there's some meeting space as well, I believe.
When I look, and then on the next page, it talks about the Denny Sanford Premier Center, but those numbers don't include the convention center or the arena.
Correct. So this, your center, it I believe does not as I recall, looking at this was the convention center event space that's offered to indoor space that would be looking at like in somewhere such as North Hall in the and elsewhere. And realistically, what we're trying to do is make competitive facility, but it's also a local facility. It's one that we don't want generating great competition to identifying opportunities to attract events that are not Stanford Center, Convention Center.
Yeah, page fourteen says the convention center and arena has over a hundred square meters of space.
If you leave the arena, both of the arena.
I'm not sure of the significance between it, but there's a lot of inconsistency.
And it's intended to be a comparative analysis is what they look at some of the facilities and the way that they're being marketed and utilized from a relative standpoint. And from a when the analysis of higher facilities throughout not only the understanding that the technical position that the expo center and my fairgrounds have is what we're trying to achieve. We took a look at entertainment spaces throughout the market, the regional marketplace. One of the things that we did notice despite the strength of the indoor arena standpoint, there is somewhat more limited market for outdoor entertainment spaces. Opportunity from a hundred and eighty acre site, multi-purpose event facility complex is being able to host outdoor festivals or entertainment events. We do have Leavitt Pavilion downtown, which is focused primarily on free local events, which is a somewhat different marketplace than some of the touring concerts and larger shows. It does suggest that there may be a potential opportunity to further exploration here and talk about that a little bit more. So after taking a look at the competitive facility and then we did a deep dive in terrible markets in industry trends to understand where the industry currently sits. Spaces that are offered, taking a look at successful, successfully operated complexes, their financial operations, their economic benefits back to the community. The space that they offered in the position that they have within the marketplace. We identify fifteen complexes throughout the country that have a similar market presence a market presence that WH line fairgrounds and Sioux Falls and many Ha Ha County would aspire to achieve. Venues like Expo New Mexico and the Expo Square in Tulsa, Exco Event Center are some larger complexes that are attracting national and regional shows and events and understanding what their marketplace offer. These events in is important to do comparative analysis on where Sioux Falls sits relative to some of these other markets to see if there are opportunities for high level basis to say that there may be a chance to have Sioux Falls tracking these types of events. Venues like Grand Island, Nebraska and Fox Park, Amarillo, Waco, Redmond, Oregon are venues that significant amount of regional statewide national economic events that island is attracting a plenty of national equestrian livestock and agri to their complex. Sioux Falls and WH line fairgrounds from a demographic standpoint does compare very favorably to these markets in terms of population averages, well income and other metrics that we've taken a look at.
How will we use demographics?
There is an aggregator service called Tree that provides demographic analysis for markets throughout the country. The analysis that we pulled was the drive rings that we were talking about earlier, the fifteen, thirty, ninety and hundred eighty minute drive rings. It's a consistent data source that comparative analysis standpoint provides similar style of data. Counts from different sources. This is a consistent one from a comparative. Russ took a look at comparable amphitheaters throughout the country, just conceptual standpoint, see if there was an opportunity and and similar to the multi-purpose event system, comparable market that were identified because also in relatively well.
Or what difference between an amphitheater and an arena seating? What, how do you define that?
See, the arena would be fully enclosed, more wall than this. An amphitheater would have nearly a roof, but it would be open air and capacity could be much more flexible where you've got covering over art or a portion of seating, but then a special uncovered capacity that is much more flexible.
You consider love it to be an
be an outdoor.
So amphitheater, the concept ranges from what Red Rocks is to Levitt.
Beyond facilities, we did a look at industry trends throughout the country. To note that these event facilities, despite being labeled as multi-purpose and highly flexible, cannot be everything. Need to try and hold in on types of events and activities that would best suited for this complex. And part of the analysis that you're doing from a local market standpoint, from a community standpoint, has started to narrow down the focus on the different types of events that we would want to highlight at the WH line fairgrounds, specifically between the community events and the services that it provides to local stations that don't have the capacity to pay the high rental rates and, and access fees at various other event facilities throughout the community marketplace, but also from a dirt floor standpoint and ag equestrian livestock shows that really have the opportunity to generate economic impact in the community and provide a service to the area. Those are our market segments that we can focus on with the WH line fairgrounds as well as larger public consumer shows, trade shows, things of that nature that again are not looked to the downtown convention center or don't have access to the available dates that the center offers, as good as that complex is have secondary facility that has the capacity to be able to accommodate events in the marketplace on a platform, a trade show, public.
If I may, going back to that slide, it seems to me that there should be more significant the slide than ten seconds, so. This is the fairgrounds and all the facilities and how it brings it in. We weren't given this for us to look at it till about a half hour before this meeting, so. That's why I'm ready to do so. Kind of go over the significance of what you're looking at here.
So with more of a service activities and complex typically have three different types of events available. So the sporting events, the amateur sports, indoors, outs. You'll have performances, concerts, entertainment events. Things that special events taken it for the most part, and you'll have meetings such as conventions, conferences, trade shows. Each of these different types of facilities requires different space offerings. For example, sports activity, you need to have a large flat space in order to be able to accommodate indoor amateur sports and set up courts and nets and goals, which is conducive with a convention center. But sporting events that require, that require seating for a primary tenant like hockey tenant or basketball tenant would be more conducive with a concert or performance venue. The seating element with a concert performance venue can be somewhat of a challenge for some certain meetings, events, conventions and trade shows because of the inflexible nature of the fixed seating component to it. However, there are certain conventions and trade shows that have a speaker, a keynote on that requires that seating element and having that overlap is kind of what's highlighted. There is some overlap, but at the end of the day, and what's really highlighted on the right-hand side of the slide, the different types of events that typically go on throughout the country at these event venues on the different types of spaces that are offered within various complexes really varies significantly based off of the type of market that you are.
So this really has nothing to do with what we specifically have, but you know, the on the right side there, the conventions require a high quality finish. So that's relativity that you're putting to it. All these different things, okay.
So with the convention center, you typically, for example, you would have the high ceilings in your exhibition hall, you'd have a ballroom carpeted space, chandeliers, wall treatments, good access to food and beverage and facilities, breakout meeting rooms with carpeting, shorter ceilings, but a high, high number of those breakout meeting rooms to be able to accommodate the various state, regional and national conventions and trade shows that are looking for that space. Event complex such as this, it has a more large exhibition concrete or space with limited with more limited access to a ballroom or carpeted space within the marketplace. You still need to have some measure of that typically for show office space for some of the breakout meeting, smaller breakouts than a typical convention or trade show or conference would host. But there is, there are some nuances to each of the different types of events, activities that typically are brought into these types of facilities up here. Okay, yes, thank you, Charlie. And having the capacity to bring them don't want to be much here into your convention center space. Challenging to clean out. Bring it in for the rodeo at the arena, but not going to be doing a lot of changeovers with that one, but to have a separate.
And the mirror factor also.
Taking a look again from an industry's trends standpoint, it's important, especially considering the economic climate that has been dealing with for the past to understand if we are looking to invest into this type of an event facility is is going to be there. We've been dealing with challenging times in recent years from a dynamic standpoint. It's important to highlight the fact that despite the major economic challenges that this country has faced over the past few decades, there has been a bounce back both within the economy and the multi-purpose event facility. It's interesting to note that the bounce back is consistent within the economy and the multi-purpose event facility in terms of the exhibiting companies, the numbers of attendees. This is a very mature industry from flat floor to equestrian livestock ag shows. Historically and consistently, our country, our economy has shown need to gather desire to do someone to be seen. In different ways and unique ways to go about doing that and seeing some of the trends that were are going on in the marketplace as a result of what's coming out of this COVID pandemic in terms of having more virtual meeting opportunities, having more open air meeting spaces and opportunities to spread out, to gather and to, to explore different areas. Been things that we've seen a much more to the forefront based off the COVID pandemic. We're still seeing a variety of different trends from highlight in terms of the facility. One of the challenges that we have right now with the expo center is the, the fact that there's been it's not we consider industry standard in terms of the support services, in terms of the HVAC, in terms of some of the utilities that are, are operating space relative to what we're seeing in some of these other complexes throughout the country. And being able to provide some of the services and having a more industry standard facility may provide opportunities to some of the other industry-wide trends that are some of the destination development investments around facilities and market about our earning. That is helping to know drive event activity at the complex, but also economic impact. Seeing outdoor event space and flexibility of experts where self promoted events that are being hosted at venues like Idaho Horse Park and the equestrian livestock, that they're hosting there. Food and beverage continues to be an important generator and and attractor, not only for fairs themselves, but for the events that are being held at multipurpose event facilities, being able to have the capacity to attract this market segment and people that are looking for that, that unique experience at the fair and fairgrounds. As well. Unity events and streaming technology continuing to last in forefront and these are things that we're able to do at a certain level at the WH line grounds are not up to industry standards in many respects and facilities that we currently have. Took a look at some of the concert economics in terms of the opportunity to bring in outside concerts and from there were a variety of different tiers and actors that are brought into a market and then space. Depending on the itself and depending on the appeal of the destination. Where we would, where historically there's been a shift about 10, 15, 20 years ago in terms of the economics surrounding posting of concerts and performance acts. And a lot of the dollars that used to go to venue operations have leaked out and have now gone to booking agents, artists, promoters, venue operations tend to get less and less revenue that is being generated by these events unless they are either self promoted events or are highly sought after ones. So it does present a bit of a challenge to enter into the place from an outdoor entertainment standpoint. Unless you are targeting the right market segment, make sure that the investment and that the risk that you are taking on from a concert promoter standpoint is appropriate for the venue. And then designing characteristics, as you're seeing, I was leading earlier. As flexibility and sustainability, like high quality retractable seating, this is something that we currently have at the expo right now. We have flexible seating, as I was alluding to earlier, we've got a typical set of 1,800 seats in that center expo hall space with a rodeo arena with a concert venue that can be expanded up to roughly 3,000. But that is, it's very labor intensive and is not consistent with industry standards that we see at, say, the Denny Sanford Premier Center or other multipurpose event facility. Other trends that we're seeing is enhancing the overall experience through outdoor spaces. I mentioned before, including average and casual flexible spaces, including public art, highlighting the unity, the destination, tying in with, with the marketing of destination. This is a, this is welcoming to many people from outside of Sioux Falls and many Haha County that otherwise went on your butt for the presence of equestrian livestock events and and being able to give them some exposure to other elements. Important opportunity that's leveraged by having an asset like this at the WH line fairgrounds.
Question for you on that one, if those are the trends we're seeing these trends being built on existing campuses, on new campuses, if there's an urban environment involved, are they being built in the urban environment or are they being built out of town?
Yes, to all of that. They, there's been investment in existing facilities throughout the country that are looking at better enhancing the experience of the guests that they're bringing in right now. As we see new builds, as we're seeing new investment into these complexes, whether it's the professional stadiums, whether it's convention centers, whether it's equestrian livestock complexes throughout the country, they are seeing the value of that investment into better enhancing their overall operational capacity as well as the marketability of the destination and trying to enhance that opportunity for not only people extending stays, but also coming back at later dates to explore what they didn't have the opportunity to do so while they're there for that. Markets like Ago, Texas have invested recently in new facilities. Theirs was more of a multipurpose indoor amateur sports complex, but also beautification of outdoor complex. We're working right now with Columbus, Ohio, the state of Ohio and Ohio State Fair, a big piece of what they're looking at reinvesting in is the overall experience of people coming onto the fairgrounds from the moment they drive up and see the space to the parking prints to having shade and seating structures to being able to different assets, not only throughout the Columbus market, but the state of Ohio and highlighting all of the different elements that are, are unique to that, that district, that state, that, that community. Some of the events, say these multipurpose complexes. And historically, we haven't seen a lot that we're starting to have been emerging in recent years include events such as esports, role raising, stream talks, AR VR experience, a lot of new technology that is being offered in, in, and the experience and access to these types of events are offered not only for the complex, but other event and locations throughout Sioux Falls. These are, are these are things that we're seeing in the industry that we're not necessarily suggesting are definite opportunities for the fairgrounds complex. But there are things that are able to be explored that are additional opportunities. One of the things that we'll get into here in a moment in terms of our projections is we've tried to identify the true opportunities, the, the actionable opportunities from an event standpoint that will translate into new revenue that would translate into new economic activity. There are other events and activities that really cannot be quantified just based off of the fact that there is, there are, are these opportunities to create these events and would require further exploration into the marketplaces. These are some of the examples of those additional events that could be attracted to the market, attracted to the complex. They aren't being quantified here, projections, so you're on. So in terms of analyzing what those opportunities are. Analysis that was conducted was started with itself's experience and conducting visit from about three months ago consisted of meeting over 70, 70 different local area stakeholders, community members, commission members, event producers, local market stakeholders and people that are tied into the community, the economics of the in WH lining fairgrounds and its operations. Beyond that, we did outreach to current, past and potential user groups out of the fairgrounds. Over 40 telephone interviews were completed with these organizations to understand from their standpoint, would you, if you're coming to the fairgrounds right now, would you continue to come back? And so are there improvements that would be needed in order for you to come back? If there were improvements made, grow and expand events and activities that you're doing, either in terms of new event dates, longer events, or to be able to attract more attendees. So we should more facilities available on complex site. From a event stand, event rights standpoint holder. That is not currently coming to the fairgrounds complex, understanding what is it about Sioux Falls and many Haha County marketplace that is not attractive? Why are you not coming right now to this marketplace? What, what is needed from an event facility standpoint in order to be able to do what is needed? But destination standpoint in terms of hotel rooms, access, entertainment, retail, or other elements that would be able to bring you into the marketplace in the future. And understanding from these past users and the potential new user groups, what the, in the over five or different annual events that these organizations represent. Coming back with recommendations, projections in terms of what is needed at the complex, at the fairgrounds in order to be able to sustain operations and marketplace as a whole. In terms of the current and past users. Well, one thing that we noted was the attractiveness of the fairgrounds location and the strength of the Sioux Falls market. There's a number of times here today, the proximity to I-29, the access to the local community, the access from outside user groups being able to come right now, highway with their trucks and trailers to load in and load out to having access to the hotels, restaurants, downtown Sioux Falls, other amenities really makes this location a very attractive spot for the fairgrounds and the multipurpose facilities and that. Almost 70% of the respondents to the survey did note that that was one of the biggest strengths. One, some of the challenges that they identified were the operations, the physical operations of the complex, some of the ventilation HVAC challenges. Being able to maintain a level of cleanliness with the complexes, a challenging hosting their event. Seen some attrition in terms of the event attendees, you can see with which events are hosted in the marketplace because of some of the challenges. And security issues with complex and the doors, access points. Challenge hosting events and having attendees if they're, if you're, if you're having a swap meet, having a trade show, you are an exhibitor that's free and goods that you intend to sell or you want to make sure that the space is secure and that you need some nice place to stay in the hotel room, that you're endangered. So things along those lines are important. Make sure that we will be able to help with within the complex.
Two questions, one, are the survey questions themselves and the responses available to us?
In aggregate, I can get you the, the actual surveys. I'd be happy to do that.
I'd like to see that. And number two, the 79% likely to return to the fairgrounds, what is the common metric there? What percent of exhibitors say they would return to any one location? What's a common?
Other similar studies that we've done, yeah. I would say it's fairly consistent with other studies that we've done in terms of the response rate that was. I can't point to specific numbers off the top of my head on. Typically will have a relatively high interest in returning. These events have seen the value in Sioux Falls and many Haha County, they see the value at the fairgrounds, multipurpose facilities that we have. They like to come back. The biggest challenge is, is can they continue to grow their events? Can they continue to host their events here? Or are they going to start to see attrition? Are they going to start to see a decline in their attendance levels? Because we don't have the facilities that are industry standards like complexes in the market that people have grown accustomed to and, and being and understanding that's the level of service that they're able to achieve at industry standard conferences. That is the biggest challenge that we were hearing from these current past users is that there are we're concerned that moving forward without continued that we will continue to see attrition in all those numbers of events, length of events.
Thank you. Do you, do you have a trend on that? I mean, it seems intuitive, right? If they've been coming here, they're going to keep some of that, this is their hope that, that if you see over time where there's attrition, meaning where they're coming back or they have numbers to show their attendance because of the.
More anecdotal information based off positions that we had in the way. Past 20 years.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you'd find that if you talk to Holly Rader. Got this.
I would think so. I would think that was accelerated in the last 10 years as the facility's gotten older. I just wondered if they were specifically saying, you know, we're going to have to do something because we've been the last five years and our attendance has been dropping. Or we're having that everything they have was telling us, you know, if this doesn't happen, the next few years, not coming back.
And I know that they've shared that information too. Gina's a question.
Did you ask those folks for that kind of information? Did you ask anybody for more, less anecdotal or concrete information? Either from the fair board or from other users?
Not specific trends in terms of the decline in attendance.
Yeah, and just any hard numbers on what is happening out there.
And the question that we asked of these current past users was, are, would you come back to the grounds? If so, would you be able to grow your events with improvements? Would you see a decline in your participation rate? Would you anticipate seeing declining participation rates if there were not an investment? Conversation more anecdotal with the event rights. Specific data, one of them. Many of them, while they, they track their financial operations and revenue and levels, don't necessarily have the historical records and or share some of those detailed. But again, some.
Did you ask them the question, how much they'd be willing to pay for increased fees? That with a nicer facility, instead of a thousand dollars a day, that maybe it's $2,500 a day or something like that. Is there, what was there, were they open to increasing their fees?
We did specifically ask if they were interested in, in increasing fees. However, the conversations with many of them surrounded an under and, and we had discussed with some of them at least, the presence of nicer newer facilities and the assumption that if nicer newer facilities were available, would they be willing to pay additional fees in order to be utilizing those spaces? In our financial projections, I can tell you that we didn't assume a significant increase in, in increase in rental rates that were being charged to the complex. So we weren't assuming that all of a sudden we're going to start tripling or, or. These events, if you're holding that constant.
So, so while you didn't have a list necessarily, just the details of who has attrited, so to speak, were some of the people that had attrited included in your survey? Did you call people that used to come to the fairgrounds and no longer come?
From, from that list of groups that are not currently coming to fairgrounds, yes, and that's beyond the next slide. That's that are no longer coming.
All right. So, so we have input from when we just on the details of how many exactly.
On exactly how many have not.
No, okay. Thank you.
Past users, we identified, we did identify a number of non local events holders in livestock ag related flat floor, consumer, public consumer show event operators. Understand from a, their standpoint, why are they not coming to Sioux Falls? The question that we asked them is specifically was if Sioux Falls and the many, many Haha County and the WH line fairgrounds offered facilities that were able to accommodate your events. What is the likelihood that you would bring future events to this marketplace, to this facility? We asked them to rate it on a scale from one to five with one being, it doesn't matter what they develop in, in what you develop in the marketplace. They're, they're never going to come. Five being assumed they're. What we were identifying was those that had either a three, which was a possibly they would consider coming in the marketplace in the future. They would likely come into the marketplace that would be a four or definitely would be a five. Among those respondents noted roughly a 67%, almost 70% positive response rate of non local organizations that historically have not been coming to Sioux Falls and many Haha County that's having an interest in their event here in the future. Probably 72% of those events had not historically held events in the.
But that's contingent upon a new facility.
Yes, sir. This is, this is not, they would, they are not funding it now because of the lack of reason and infrastructure that we are offering. We need to be invested.
I could, I could go back to that rates. These other places have expanded, increased their facilities, we have an idea as to how much they were able to increase their revenue. From the users by having better facilities.
Yes, we can get that data again from a modeling standpoint as we're looking forward in terms of what does this translate to, what does this mean for. WH line fairgrounds and Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County marketplace. We didn't assume a rental rate. We could, and realistically speaking, many of these events organizers, rights holders typically look at having new facilities and assume that they're going to come in and pay a higher rate. For renting the space, that is, that is a typical response along.
But at the same time, there may be some that they're attracted to now is the low rate. And they will put up with a lesser facility to have that low rate.
Regardless, the rate is lower than we're seeing. The convention center, the premier center. Be the anticipated rate is that it would something that is affordable, and again, you've got typically you would have highly dynamic pricing models for different events and activities. Coming in, you'll have events that are generating significant amounts of economic impact back to the future and maybe afforded. Discounts on their rental rate. Have other events that provide a significant economic benefit, a cultural benefit, community to the community. Discounted rates, we have others that are generating significant amounts of revenue, so a swap meet, a consumer show that is driving revenue. Complex would typically have a higher rate. So as as we look at each of the individual events, there's going to be a different pricing model that. But ensuring that it continues to be affordable.
So when you talk about that dynamic pricing model, seems to me that. One of the challenges we have here in Minnehaha County is that the revenue generation. That might cause some dynamic pricing in another market wouldn't really work here in Minnehaha County because the income being generated in the community. Is not going to either the fair board or Minnehaha County to operate the facilities, it's going to other entities, and so that's our challenge, I think. But so that doesn't, that dynamic pricing wouldn't work quite the same way here.
It would be much more of a challenge, you're absolutely right, because again, when he doesn't receive. The sales tax revenue does not receive a hotel motel or business improvement district tax revenue. It is. Understanding, understand, having a dynamic pricing model in place is one that would be intrinsic upon the direction of county commissioners. And the board that is overseeing operations of. It's complex to understand, most events are important. You want to, you want to charge the food shelf the same rate that we're charging swap meet. Some of the Austrian shows, livestock shows that are coming into the complex. There are, there are different pricing models that are likely in place regardless of the economics behind it and the fiscal impacts and economic.
Dynamic pricing model. Better facility, there's more higher end types of investors that can pay more. Or profitability, that's part of that. I top says some other.
So with. Analysis that was conducted from. We had a local market position, operations. Competitive landscape, industry trends. comparable venues. Based off of the analysis. Recommendation. Building program. With WH line. And recommending roughly fifty thousand square foot multi-purpose event hall. Highly flexible, retractable seating. Twenty five hundred. That can accommodate third shows. Livestock, equestrian shows, it can also pull back the seats and host swap meets and public consumer shows and trade shows, other flat floor related activities. Jason to it would be roughly a hundred thousand square foot, connected to it would be a hundred thousand square foot multi-purpose exhibition space, again, concrete floor. High-end climate-controlled HVAC systems so that we can host and have stalling and stabilizing penning for livestock. And horses and other animals, but also be able to clean it out and clear the dirt away, clear the shavings away and be able to host. Trade shows and public consumer shows and things of that nature in this this space. It would be connected on two sides with high roll doors so that events that are using both spaces would have the sense that it is consistent, connected. Space, you would also from a livestock equestrian show standpoint, have the ability to have pending in the hundred thousand years, installing in the hundred. Indoor space. One door where you're. Have access to warm-up space just outside of that door. Directly attached to the stalling spending space, walk through that door, go into the main show ring space, show exhibit. Just take in your activity and then have the separate. Able to flow back out and back into your stalling, stabilizing penning space. This on both ends in in terms of being able to accommodate a fair amount of events and activities. Luckily seventy five hundred square feet of breakout meeting rooms. Office space, a show office space, a sports space, things of that nature, and then updating the three hundred. Currently on site to a more modern standard, right now, the the amps, the. Electrical service that is afforded with these RV hookups is much smaller than what current trucks and trailers require getting that up to industry standard to allow for people to bring in their their trailers. Animals and we accommodate it on site. As well as some updated and expanded administrative space, it's something that's been.
So is that essentially replacing the Xco Xco building, that's what you're suggesting, okay? Get down to a level I can understand it, so.
And you remember after the workshop, you know, we we came back with a series of proposals, one was the economic, the physical planning, and we decided we're going to wait for the physical planning later, we'll do some, you know, the master plan and the diagrams, so. We're pricing based off this written material right here, right now, so we can, we can fine tune that we get in the pricing here and just that better if we decide to take that next step.
I know that. A lot of work, we spend a lot of time on the fairgrounds, moving dirt, and I've come to learn that dirt isn't all the same. Correct? I was loose for someone. Anyway, that's more information than I want to know, is this assuming that that dirt stays in place? For those events that you're not moving, I mean, like, I I understand that the Denny, but how many events do they bring dirt in there for, rodeo?
Well, we are bull rides, big one.
Okay, and I assume that if somebody just said, I want to do an event and bring dirt in, they're being told.
Be big enough.
Really big deal to go through and. So does that dirt just kind of stay in place, because you can move dirt, what, every week?
We move a lot of dirt and and for the for the events at the Denny, they use our dirt. Just a bull ride is a different footing than barrel racers and team ropers and a full bowl rodeo, so there's a clay dirt sand mix, so it gives, you can kind of have a happy medium and you can bring, you know. Users can bring in additional product, but to have an arena that stayed a full-size arena, the dirt stayed in would be hugely beneficial to remove. Six, eight times a year. And currently, we're blessed with working with the. The city with the training and everything that they do out there, storage that we've been working with. With the city. In and out for us, if you had to have a dirt contract, that bits as high as fourteen, sixty thousand dollars just to bring dirt into the center room and then haul it back out. And in, we we get things done because there's other events that. Big events that don't need the dirt, so you got to get the dirt out, get that event in, then right away it will have to be. So having something that had. Full-time dirty. Events would be great and then.
And and the intention would be that that fifty thousand square foot space would be primarily dirt. But we have the opportunity, if we did have some large events, we could clear it out, that we would note that fifteen to twenty thousand dollars would be worth the investment, whether. Operationally from a revenue standpoint, or otherwise economically from the event that's being brought in, be able to 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 clean it out and have that event. Additionally, and Scott, I'm sure can allude to, you can do, you seasonally rotate those events where you've got. Number of equestrian livestock ag-related shows that are turning back to back during certain times of the year. Clean it out once and then you host your indoor platform shows at that space that is is needed, one of the nice things with this setup. Is the opportunity to switch where that primary dirt location is from the center hall to one of the on the periphery to the north side. Now you can get up to a hundred thousand square feet of continuous clean space relatively easily in that large exhibition hall. And have dirt space be maintained in that fifty thousand square foot event. Side, it was going to be completely, at least physically separated from an HVAC standpoint, it'll be connected, you'll have access to it from. But the opportunity to keep the dirt in the one space and out of the other is going to be much easier, much more.
And even though we would have stolen temporarily in the hundred thousand square foot facility, that would not necessarily mean we have dirt in there, there'll be a non-slip surface in the walkways and things of that nature, so that animals can move it.
It may seem fairly insignificant, but there's a big thing in the. In the rodeo industry, all the associations give awards for best arena footage. There's, there's people that are well-known for having some of the best footing and they get some of your shows, but it's. It's a tricky, tricky thing to get the right combination of everything, you've been pretty successful. You didn't know when to award one here, but there's a lot of work and a lot of equipment and groomers and water and. You have sand and different things to it, but we get by, which is pretty minimal compared to the amount of effort to get the dirt in and out. And store it, and then especially in the fall of the year, if you miss, well, we hopefully don't get the protect them the next couple of days, if we had a pile of dirt outside, then. You know, the top three, four feet, but you can't use because it's all, it has too much water saturation, you dig down and use lots in the middle of it, so.
I've been at the national finals rodeo for the last five days and they were able to leave all the the same dirt in there the entire week, but next week they may take it out and have basketball in there, there's a concrete floor under that dirt. That's a flexible.
I get hit myself, but as events grow, what role does food and beverage play as far as revenue support for these events, water events, that type of.
Continues to be an important aspect, not only from a revenue standpoint, experiential standpoint.
I've seen those numbers in here and I would guess that it grows revenue-wise too.
Yes, it with the added attendance levels, we would anticipate seeing additional new opportunities from a food and beverage standpoint, and yes, we'll get into the the financial projections here in just a moment.
So is the the multi-purpose event the only place that'll have seating? Like the retractable seating there?
Yes.
Okay, and and if you're saying the show ring is one fifty by three or one fifty by three hundred, that takes forty five thousand square feet, you're leaving five thousand for all the seating?
It's roughly, yeah, and and we're targeting one fifty by three hundred, you have the capacity to get a hundred fifty by three hundred. If you have very limited seating just along the sides, most of the shows and show rings that were one, two hundred fifty, excuse me, a twenty five hundred seating capacity level within the complex, you could still get by with one twenty five by two fifty show.
And that's not going to detract from potential users?
No, one twenty five is good, and the barrel racers are the one that really set that win, but one twenty five could work as well. About three hundred gives you a lot more.
Alright, thanks.
A lot of time. We're not assuming that that's going to all of a sudden shift away from us to the premier.
Twenty five hundred seats, no.
It's going to be smaller, smaller shows, smaller relative to that rodeo, it's going to be. Attended events that require. Thank you.
That probably wouldn't accommodate, you know, back sorting grounds, back panels, stuff like that for rough stock and time division. If that's where. You can buy one thirty by two fifty is about the smallest we'd want to go to accommodate all the people that. Obviously, if you have a bull ride, you can make a much smaller arena for many reasons, but as far as all the rodeo events, a one thirty by two fifties is not as small as. And then you have your all those other ancillary panels and so.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that a?
Just a cop.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? And before I move on, I'm getting a bit of a future opportunity, it's not intrinsic, the operations of the fair. Complex, maybe an opportunity for some outdoor. Amphitheater, festival grounds type of space that would be separate from the market segment that is attracted to the level of. But that would be more. Intention would be to bring in. Red Rocks is a tough comparison for anything because it is the the top tier, but something like that where you have that opportunity to bring in people from outside of the Minnehaha County marketplace. To attend outdoor concerts, entertainment events and and festival activities. Very carefully considered, considering what's going on at the Denny Sanford Premier Center. But those being that one being indoor space, one being more local community space, we did see that there may be a potential opportunity for that that future investment somewhere down the road, again, not intrinsic to operations, nor is it included in the projections that we've made in terms of financials.
There's a sensitivity issue there of noise that you have to watch for, and also timing, the time you shut them down, two AM, something much earlier.
Easier by the interstate than it is downtown.
I'm just curious, because you said it twice, it's not intrinsic, what do you mean when you say it's not intrinsic?
In order to be like the Sioux Empire Fair or other events. Complex, we would not need to have. We've already got a forty two hundred seat grandstand that is used for the fair itself, the rest of the activity that's going on year round at the WH line fairground really doesn't require. Space, whereas the hundred fifty thousand square foot. We are recommending what we needed in order to be able to accommodate events and activities that are currently going in there and have the capacity to start bringing in additional events.
Study we did back in the nineties, I think, we actually enhanced it to understand a bit more of an amphitheater.
So. We did a very high level. Architecture. Other industry departments taking a look at recent, past per square foot construction cost estimates for the various spaces that we're recommending with the multi-purpose event hall, the exhibition hall. The pre-function and and support space and the administrative space. We also assumed some improvements to the four H and FFA livestock facilities. Upgrading the existing three hundred and twenty one RV. You have on site and then developing more of the signature entrance, more of the sense of arrival, sense of place for the fairgrounds for the event complex. Overall, based off of, again, where we're seeing the industry today and and current estimates on order of magnitude construction cost, our construction cost would range more. our construction cost would range somewhere between 73, roughly $70 million for the complex. You include soft cost, site improvements, that number is a total, construction cost would be estimated somewhere in the 84 to 105 million dollars. I will caveat that very much at this point by saying that construction industry over the past few years, pandemic, has been rather haywire, and are stories of instruction development that is going on right now, that is needed, that is seen, estimates that are twice what, a few years ago, construction timelines that are twice what they were just a few years ago. A lot of discussion in the industry on whether those rates and timelines are here to stay, or they're going to be, like, gas prices, and they've gone up, and will come back down eventually at some point here in the near future. So additional analysis will be required, and that's why we do have a bit of a range in terms of the, the construction cost. The other element to note is that we are talking about higher-end facilities than what we currently have available, in terms of HVAC, sort of lighting, in terms of the utilities and would bring it up to the industry standard that we have not seen with the fairgrounds complex before. It's not just a pole barn with four walls and some lights. These are types of facilities that not only are able to host and attract the events that we've historically been able to bring to the place, but have that opportunity to put us on, in, in conversation with larger regional, potential international, that's that would be industry standard that they are seeing elsewhere in the, in the area, places like Alliance Energy Center in Madison, or Grand Park down in, Foner Park down in Grand Eye.
Root Acoustics Internet Activity that comes in.
Of getting into some of the projection, what we would anticipate to see. Projected out the overall stated utilization by event type within the complex, that you see in the left-hand column. Those are estimates on a typical annual basis for operations within the WH Lion Fairgrounds. Typically, we'll see roughly 20 equestrian livestock shows, 19 trade shows, about 10 community or banquet events, renovations, things along those lines. Maybe three concert festivals in the, in the fair on an annual basis. The 139, 140 annual days, that's when the event is actually occurring, where you have exhibitors or attendees present. Where the, the majority of economic benefit is generated, that's where a majority of revenue is generated. We also have to account for utilization days, which is from the move-in of the event to the move-out. So you have a date that the event moves, a livestock show will move in on Monday to start their show on Thursday. Attendees start to show up on Thursday, exhibitors show up on Thursday, will stay through Sunday, and then they need two days to move out. So you've got utilization from the starting Monday to the following Tuesday, of activity going on at the complex. So as we're taking a look at occupancy, as we're taking a look at capacity to add events, that's, understand what the utilization profile looks like from an economic and financial standpoint. We will project, also, in terms of projections, we anticipate seeing an additional 42 pole event days on an annual basis among 19 eating up to a year of stabilization. So the first year after opening, we would anticipate a growth events at the complex that would ramp up over the course of the next two, three, four years. The reason that we don't see that right away is many of these events already have contracts or commitments years out. Any of them will sit there and like to hear the experiences of other events, producers and attendees to, or they sign on to say that they are willing to pay into the complex. You see that ramp-up period typically over roughly a four-year period, which is what we're projecting here. Once we reach that, that level of stabilization, we would anticipate against seeing roughly 73 annual events, or any one annual that is, and 440 utilization days for the complex.
So how do you classify the event? Because when we submitted all the data, for instance, if somebody calls on a Friday and wants, or somebody calls, wants to use the North Johnson building on a Friday, we already have an event, we have the food giveaway that happens every week. Anytime they're gathering the people with an activity taking place, that's our definition of an event, so food giveaway. Except a few times when it doesn't happen on a Friday. We classify that as time and some events. Food giveaway would be 45 or 47 events itself.
Giveaways, there's more primaries events, activities that are going on, and some of the support structures, really looking at the 150,000 square foot multipurpose event.
Okay.
Based off of the event levels, and, and starting, as we alluded to early, roughly 100, 500,000 attendee days are being realized at the fairgrounds complex. In event levels, you anticipate that rising up to 620,000 pool event attending, see the attendee days, which 220,000 of those heavy days, generating 82,000, roughly 82,000 hotel room nights. Room nights over the course of the year, we would anticipate seeing at, in the Sioux Falls, Minnehaha market in terms of the economic benefit of investing into the WH Lion Fairgrounds. And these are segmented by the types of events. Different spending patterns, different length of stay, different assumptions for each one of these different market segments to understand. I like the unique.
I mean, campers going into the hotel bed nights, if you're coming in from out of town and you want to hang out at the fairgrounds, did you have a certain percentage out?
Yeah, there, there typically are going to be some folks that are going to stay in those trailers, especially some of the high-end ones that you see 100,000 plus trailers that, that people have. A lot of times what they are doing, and we are holding, we are making assumptions for the number of people that are staying in hotel room nights in a hotel per night. So for example, with the question livestock shows, they have those RVs, we've assumed a higher number of occupants per hotel room that's being generated within the market, assuming that one or two people may be staying in their RV, their camper, while others are staying at hotels. A lot of times you'll have an equestrian show, you'll have the owner and their family will stay at the hotel, whereas the handler their support, so they can be very close to the, their animal. Some owners that'll stay in the campers and they'll have their support. Family staying in hotels, but we did make some assumptions based off of the cooperation of these events, occupancy with. It's not just one attendee to the market is going to translate to one.
And I think just recognizing, there are some very expensive animals that come through, through this stuff. I mean, it's not unusual to have six-figure.
Want to be close to them and, and the economic value of the animals, there's that emotional value that makes them, that they want to be staying close. Having, having access through the RV hookups and those camper sites on location is a critical piece to operating of livestock ads. Based off of the projections of operations, event levels, attendee levels, we're looking at, similar to how we presented them earlier. We're seeing roughly a $1.3 million revenue line item for, again, this is average over the course of five or six years. We'll look back to make sure that, again, the $150,000.
It doesn't include debt at all for the million-dollar building?
Pure operations. We'd anticipate the first few years ramping up to a level of sustainability, is that we likely have an operating deficit. We would need to have higher levels of staff in the first couple of years in order to not only sell, but maintain the facilities. We would have some additional costs associated with operations as well. We don't have the full amount of events that we would be projecting in the years. We would have additional expenses from a marketing and operational standpoint, those first few years, as we're leading up to the operations and then the full stabilization for the complex. However, by year four, we would anticipate that we would get back to a point of stabilized operations that would, somewhere in the black. Again, it's, it's going to fluctuate from one year to the next, necessarily in the operate, we simply otherwise that are out of our, our control, but of a 10-year trajectory, we would expect seeing at least breaking slight.
This, is this numbers just related to the facility itself and not the fair numbers? I know that's not a big number, but they did make a half a million dollars this year in the fair, so are the fair revenues?
Yes, the fair revenues are included and incorporated into this number, and there's an assumption of additional attendance levels at facility. We would expect seeing if the attendance levels at the fair increase to 1,500, is an avenue, in the course of the, the fair. Which, the, the, the three-day, the three-day fair, rising up to roughly 115,000 on average per day, which is going to translate into additional revenues from exhibitors, food and other assets on, on the complex as well.
Little question, and, and are the assumptions on the utilities decreasing moving forward based on efficiencies?
Yes.
Okay.
The new facility.
Years I've had to up that number every year, I want to know you're correct.
Yes, no, with, with new facilities, Scott, with better quality HVAC, the industry standard, lighting, and, and control offices that exist with lighting and operating the multipurpose event facility that currently are not afforded to the, as we see them today. We anticipate seeing a slight decrease in the whole assumption of utilities account. Thank you.
A couple of comments, one, I think the $500,000 this year was a wonderful boon to the, to them. They were very fortunate because of some COVID dollars that created, that probably is an outlier.
We were afforded some opportunities with some partners that had some COVID grant monies that had to be used by the end of this year. So that, that was a one-time shot, that was probably right around $100,000, there's some, some gray area there, and some intangibles when it comes to certain events on. I like a concert, for instance, you can't just say that a concert made or lost money. Did they come early, did they buy ride respants, did they spend time in the, or do they have to be regarded three hours early and then delay? So all kind of rolls up into one, so the, the, the near-perfect weather coupled with that opportunity of that partner.
And then I just wanted to mention that because you did not put substantial rate increases in here for rental fees, that this is conservative.
I, I, in, in the intent with this, not to put operations and sales staff into a, we need to achieve a certain level of, of operations. Based off of what we were hearing from organizers and their interest in the Sioux Falls marketplace, both in the past, in your new user groups, and in, in terms of gauging the operations of the complex today, wanted to take a look at, and what are I don't want to say conservative is not the right numbers, because I, I think it's pragmatic, I think it was what is reasonably attainable with consistent and, and measurable effort from the community, from reasonable to anticipate seeing moving forward. I think there is a tremendous opportunity in terms of being able to attract non-local, regional, potentially niche, national events, that has not been incorporated into this, just for the simple fact that it is, it is not something that I would, I would, I would want to project onto operations staff to say that we need this level, it is not something that is very achievable here in terms of, yes, ma'am.
But as I look at that, you're able to grow 397 from the million, 313 to the million, 710. Okay, but the profitability went from 80 to 59.
Once again, I'm not used to economic development so much, my brain doesn't process this appropriately, and you probably have a slide coming up. Slides in advance. Is it common for you to make these presentations totally?
So there are typically two separate buckets that we'll look at. One is the construction cost and the capital required to invest into the product. The other, just purely financially, is, is the operational level, because typically you don't have the same funding source for maintaining operations within the complex as you do developing the complex. And we'll get into a little bit of the different funding mechanisms that are still in the industry here in a little bit, to identify opportunities and start the discussion in terms of identifying that 70, 71, maybe 72. Make this, pursue this investment. This slide is really intended to understand ongoing need of investment, aside from the capital required to invest into the complex.
Somebody gave you 104 million, which I'm not expecting, but if they gave it, this is what the expense would be, right? Yeah, can you get you? So that's basically what it is, this is what, this is what the operating expenses is for the county moving forward, taking out the whole building project out of it, because you can't afford it.
Let me ask Charlie Joel, in other parts of this, why do projections prove they're reasonably accurate, because projections are
Yes, I mean, it is. There are projections, and they are based off of a number of different factors that we can say that projects them in past studies, but here in Sioux Falls or elsewhere throughout the country.
Little quick question. Say there's a tremendous amount of builders, and this would happen, when you look at properties that are either nonprofits, for-profit, managed by the county, or managed by a city, or whether it's your county owns, you end up with this stadium facility, draw people, go from board to board. Do you see, as far as the management of it, does it end up like, you know, the SMGs of the world, or AGMs that run these big facilities? Or as a percentage basis, somebody similar to our size and scope, is it a, is it a nonprofit that's been there forever? I'm not saying the fair association is going to be here forever, I think management of a new stadium facility has to be the best, the best people in place for the, the best output the lion family wanted, as a sustainable destination for the economic impact and agriculture and indication. I guess my question is, how, and maybe you can't answer it, based on other sizes, what, I mean, what, how do you see the management? Based on other sizes, what, I mean, what, how do you see the management?
So first, let me, before I get into a caveat, we didn't, for this study, we did not dive into the management typical facilities of this nature. And in the past, so being familiar with it on a high level, I can see that there are a variety of different ways that it is handled. And that it's each unique to the individual marketplace. If there are operators in the, the community that see the benefit and have the opportunity to leverage assets such as Fairgrounds Complex, the center, having a third party operator is certainly an option for a number of communities that have either a, an authority run with a board that oversees the operations of the complex. There are a number of, of communities that have just a municipal department within the county, the city, the state that has staff people that are there allocated to operate the complex. Ultimately, it comes down to what the vision is, venue, marketing, opportunities that are, are projected in terms of levels, in terms of oftentimes with a third party. Value from selling sponsorships, naming rights, other third party revenue sources rather than rental revenues as well as operating food and beverage onsite as a potential revenue source stream. And certainly from a shared whole head standpoint of already in the market or nearby the market and have access to the events and organizations that would have an interest in that space, have the capacity from an economies of scale standpoint to leverage from a negotiating standpoint, hosting events at certain locations or certain areas within the community. There are a number of different benefits to having that third party private management firm that could be afforded. But again, it would require additional detail, additional analysis to determine what the right course or what the best direction would be. We assume that consistent management to what has been going on at the WH line fairgrounds would continue to operate. This space for assuming a successful marketing plan and info of space to attract people.
The third party operator is
the Jeff, the operator at the Premier Center?
ASM.
ASM. So there may be, again, an opportunity to have an ASM that they may have an interest in managing. They have an interest from OBG Spectra, which is a competitor of ASM to come in and have their in the marketplace.
Interestingly enough, Spectrum runs a food and beverage and ASM runs the facility.
Regardless, if you've got a facility in a market attractive, the, the potential exists to bring that in. Additional analysis that would be needed in order to make recommendations on what's any questions here? So again, as we've been discussing, there are economic investing grounds complex. Spending is, is three different parts. Costs and dollars that are spent in the market for services, et cetera. The spending that goes on in the facility at, at the WH line fairgrounds by local, non-local, other visitors, rental revenues through goods and services onsite and making those purchases. But then importantly, and the biggest piece of this is the out of facility spending, those hotels, restaurants, retail establishment, establishments, car rentals and other goods and services throughout the many haha county marketplace. Those direct spending dollars are spent throughout the community and fire and induced spending that occurred as other, other goods and services that those dollars that are now brought into the marketplace are then respent on other goods and services and are, are continued to be respent throughout the marketplace. Spending improved. Business services, additional household spending, governmental and other sectors that are spending dollars to provide additional goods and services in the community because you now have more economic. All three of those together result in the economic health that would be projected. Discussing earlier, make our projections, we do hold constant the annual spending that is assumed to be spent in the many haha county marketplace. Already these dollars that we are projecting are in the market that otherwise would not be here but for the presence of the WH line fairgrounds. Based off of the projections and the fairgrounds complex has roughly a thirty five million dollar total economic output. Million dollars direct annual spending going on in the falls and county marketplace today. With, as we alluded to earlier, roughly five hundred thousand dollars in sales tax revenue that's generated. Three hundred eighty nine jobs, full and part-time jobs that are created throughout the community on and roughly twelve point seven, twelve point eight million dollars in personal earnings that is generated within the community. Year four, year of stabilization of events and activities. Multi-purpose event complex at the fairgrounds, we would project the direct spending to rise to roughly twenty nine million dollars per year of a total economic output up to forty four point seven million dollars a year. Over the course of twenty years, that would, if you run the math out, it's a little over a billion dollars over twenty years. Just that new investment, including the construction cost and the, the economic output from the construction, the in-facility and out of facility spending in the marketplace compared to what we're seeing today. If we were to extrapolate the twenty million, or excuse me, twenty years worth of economic activity that is being generated by the WH line fairgrounds today, we're roughly four hundred sixty million dollars in incremental direct spending, roughly seven hundred and four million dollars in incremental economic output in roughly nine point nine billion dollars in incremental city sales tax. That is not assuming any attrition twenty years if we were not to reinvest in WH line. That's assuming that operations, attendance levels, other activities stay consistent over that, the course of the twenty years. This, the, the incremental projections are just based off of what we anticipate seeing over the course of twenty years with the investment.
You know, it's an interesting point and something that I've been pondering. What if nothing is done? What type of attrition would we see? Is there any guidance on that, any direction on that?
Anticipate seeing, I, I, we did not project out what that attrition would look like. It's something that to another additional analysis for this. You, I would anticipate on an annual basis continuing to see a decrease in attendance levels at the county fair, at various events. Over time, as these events rights holders continue to see that attrition and attendance levels, you start to look at other event facility complexes throughout the state region in which to host their events and start talking about the rate at which that occurs is going to be different for each market, different for each situation. Pretty Spartan internships, so what is that we're offering right now where the, the facilities are not very consistent with industry standards. I would fear that we, without reinvestment in the near term, we're going to, and we will likely start seeing seeing reinvestment into complexes like state fairgrounds. Warner Park in Grand Island, like Lion Energy Center in Madison, like the state fairgrounds in Des Moines. As we're seeing in a commute from a community standpoint, the investment into other, it's like the convention center, the premier center. Pentagon, another pavilion, understanding from a community standpoint. Like from a community standpoint, to, once you've established that baseline oftentimes you get that statement and wondering and asking questions why we're not seeing that at
No, we've, we've had events leave and book already for the decks here on, it's not even built yet. So South Dakota rodeo finals, weekly event. That's, we hosted them this year, they're going up there for the next two years. We worked a contender for a big cattle show that's going to the decks in June, about six hundred head of cattle, maybe more. Terry L Schmidt has files where people have said they love Sioux Falls, but due to the condition of the expo building that, you know, they wouldn't be asking for any more. I mean, we, we, I think we do very well with what we have to offer the users now, but we're, anytime there's a new drill, people will try it out. Our leg up is, I believe we have a script potential bringing them back with some, is what you're talking about because of what Sioux Falls has to offer.
That's, I mean, that's my point, Scott. And that end, one of the things that Sioux Falls has is again, that destination appeal is already established. Center arena stand as a destination market. It's established in sports tourism. The destination market, there are a lot of assets that are already in place in Sioux Falls. From a hotel, restaurant, entertainment, retail establishment standpoint, to attract, retain and maximize the return of economic benefit, economic impact with the community marketplace that candidly throughout communities throughout the state of South Dakota, throughout the regional marketplace. See as much opportunity to attract and generate those, that, that interest. In the groups that we spoke to, one of the things that we heard consistently was that we would love to come to Sioux Falls. We love the attractiveness of the destination, we love the location, we love the market. That amenities that it affords, it offers, we just don't have the right facilities in place in order for us to come. Or we need to have the facilities improved for us to continue to come here. There's potential, I think, to grant, and this is not incorporated in these numbers, but there is, as I potential to attract, getting into the conversation on a regional and even a niche national level for hosting larger significant events. One event that we surveyed, Dakota Fest, that's, that's held up in Mitchell on an annual basis is a tremendously economic impact generating event that would not consider Sioux Falls right now. But look at the attractiveness of the market and, and said that they would have exploring opportunities if facilities were here and able to accommodate them forward. Understanding what that marketplace looks like from a, a, a large and, and significant economic impact generated. Right now, we're not even in the conversation. These groups, they're looking at looking at alliance of Madison. They're looking at complexes throughout the region.
Okay, question for you. So that is incremental cumulative twenty years city sales tax, nine point nine million. But when I look up at the chart, city sales tax fourteen, three, and with no change to nine, nine, that looks like a growth of about four point four million.
I'll revise that number down below. That is
Thank you.
I think we're running a little over time. Wondering if we could just skip to the last slide. Then if people
I liked the manual. I lighted a number of these special points already, some of the additional benefits outside of the economic benefits. At the fairgrounds, having the identity for the Sioux Empire Fairgrounds, having a market segment, elevating the presence within the visitor and local industry. Opportunities, development, revitalization in the area and certainly this is an asset that is heavily utilized by folks throughout the local community is an asset that is highly valued. I mean, to reinvest in that, it was more than to answer. Last slide that we've got, our discussion on typical funding sources. Ideally from a, and this is from a construction cost standpoint, typically what we look for from a construction funding mechanism is one that is afforded the benefit of what is being invested in. So what that means is if you are investing into a multi-purpose event facility that is generating economic whether generating sales tax revenue, hotel motel tax revenue, official development or, or other economic investment in the area. Finding the, how those, those investments are being realized within the community and having those, leveraging those as a funding source. The econ, the, the, the construction cost space to make so as we look at typical funding sources, we've got a variety of different funding mechanisms that are, are used throughout the country for these, these spaces. Motel taxes, sales taxes and tax increment financing opportunities. These all can be explored further here as, as potential opportunities. I've got a handful of, of different ideas that have been I think are worthy of consideration in terms of generating, leveraging the incremental and the revenue that is generated, the economic benefit that is generated by these facilities as well as mission of the complex in the marketplace. And those would be through the, the private sources to be their grants, donations, fundraise campaign. There are a number of firms throughout the country that can come in and, and give them this in terms of from a funding standpoint, generate capital investment nations to go toward the capital investment in the complex. Then also taking a look at opportunities like naming rights, sponsorships, rights, registration pieces. Partnerships, public, private partnerships that could be considered for developing utilities or, or other elements within the complex. But it is a, a complex puzzle. The right sources.
All questions you need?
I don't know that it's a question, but I just want to say like this study has done a great job of showing that the fair board and the county have honored the legacy of the Axtell and Lions families. And the opportunity that exists before the task force and the commission is frankly because of that commitment. And the thoughts that I have for the task force, the commissioners and honestly, the city council really center on culture. Sioux Falls is known for tackling and resolving hard issues to move forward, goes to the falls, viaduct, moving the train tracks, et cetera. When they want to. So I'm trying to think through whether Sioux Falls is ready to embrace the events in the community that the space will bring to the city. I'm thinking of the support with fundraised dollars, support of attendance at the events and support with a cultural embrace of the event. I also have been in Vegas during the rodeo. And it's a very different experience to be in Vegas during the rodeo than it is to be in Vegas during a different time of the year. And I'm wondering if Sioux Falls will break out the cowboy hats and boots to welcome and embrace this part of its identity. From what I've seen in this community, this is the heart of the issue. If the community supports this, the rest of it, figuring out the tax revenue, how to deal with the location and how to do all of the other hard things will get figured out. So my question really is, does the community want to support this type of event space? It's a cultural question and I'm intrigued to see how the answer reveals itself in the next phase of this project.
Any comments? On the task force, Scott?
I will say as far as all of our rodeo events now, they're they're our last Bull's Bronx, which is we had to turn people away when you have fat people in the the FRA rodeo. The big extravaganza this weekend that are are hugely attended in Sioux Falls. I mean, this community, yeah, they'll bring out the boots, perhaps. I mean, it's pretty obvious and evident. Far now striking a deal with the five years on second richest rodeo in the nation. Yeah, they they do support that and coupled with all the agricultural events. And filling in with other ancillary events. I I I think we have a history to prove this point.
I know he has to go. Yeah, I just, I want to thank you guys for coming. I mean, I think the point of today, since none of us had any opportunity to look at any of this information before 30 minutes before this meeting, because we need some time to absorb it. Getting of this anywhere near the middle or the end, but I really appreciate all the work that all of the folks here in this room have done. So thank you. Sorry.
We'll all work with Joel for last minute tweaks out of there. And as soon as that's done, we will get it on our website. And I'll send it out to all of you here. We'll look it out on it. It'll be on the county website. So once we've got those couple of things taken care of, we'll get that out there.
And as a task force, we really haven't had a chance to meet. Will we get a chance to meet on this?
Carol.
I think a meeting.
Yeah, we'll start in January. Bob threw out the other day a challenge to wrap up by March. I think that was a great challenge. It's good to have my fire. I was, I appreciated that. And so I think we talked about doing maybe something every week just to keep it moving at this point. And I guess I would just like to ask Joel that if if there's a point a few weeks down the road that we say we really need to better understand a couple of things on here that we could pick you up by Zoom.
As long as it snows not flying, I'll drive back down.
Additional comments from the task force? Public comment time. If there anyone from the public
If I could, just for the task force, I would say thank you, Minnehaha County for your willingness to involve people from the community with this. So thank you.
Very exciting, very exciting. So Bertha and I will be gone. We'll have two new commissioners. Joe is here today. Jen had a family issue that she could not attend. But they will be getting up to speed. I think they have been. Red additions to the board to help us move forward. With that, if there's nothing else, I would ask for motion to adjourn. Motion a second. All those, the I, I, those are sign motion pass.